For Monday, July 15, 2013, for the zoning of 31492, 31506, and 31520 Cherry Hill. Ms. Bettes, you take the roll, please.
Mayor Walker?
Here.
Councilmember Squires?
Here.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Here.
Councilmember Lynch?
Here.
Councilmember Dodge?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Show Ms. Dodge absent and excused. Anybody wishing to speak on the zoning from R1 to C1 for 31492, 31506, and 31520 Cherry Hill, please come to the podium and state your name.
Where's that at?
Cherry Hill and Mayor Men. We're going to rezone it from residential 1, R1, to C1, commercial. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Josh Allen. I'm with Morningstar Partners. We're the developer for the proposed project. I'm just here for support of the zone change.
Do you have a card?
I do.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, I will close this public hearing out at 6:58. We will call the next public hearing for the zoning of 8:43 and 8 to 8:79 Ince Road from C1 to C2. To order, Ms. Bettes, take the roll.
Mayor Walker?
Here.
Councilmember Squires?
Here.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Here.
Councilmember Lynch?
Here.
Councilmember Fetter?
Here.
Councilmember Dodge?
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Anybody wishing to speak on the rezoning from C1 to C2 for 8:43 to 8:79 Ince Road, please come to the podium and state your name. Okay, I'll ask one more time. Anybody wishing to speak on the rezoning of 8:43 to 8:79 Ince Road from C1 to C2? Okay, seeing none, we will close out this public hearing. We will move now into our regularly scheduled council meeting for Monday, July 15, 2013, 7:00 p.m. First order of business is our opening ceremony, which consists of the National Anthem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those service members who have given their lives while defending our country. Would everybody please stand? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Ms. Bettes, you take the roll, please.
Good evening, Your Honor. Mayor Walker?
Here.
Councilmember Squires?
Here.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Here.
Councilmember Lynch?
Here.
Councilmember Fetter?
Here.
Councilmember Dodge?
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Show Councilmember Dodge absent and excused, please.
I will, sir.
The next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda as presented.
So moved. Support.
Moved by Councilmember Lynch, supported by Councilmember Squires. Any discussion from the table, from the general public? Ms. Bettes?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. We have no community events tonight. Item six, I don't see anybody from the state or county. Oh, yes, sir. Come on up. From Richard LeBlanc's office.
She was hiding in the back corner.
Hiding in the back.
That's right. I was hiding back there. Good evening, everyone. I'm Mary McLendon from the Office of Wayne County Commissioner, Richard LeBlanc, and it's always a great pleasure to be here. And as you know, the District 12, which you're a part of, is a pretty extensive district, and Commissioner LeBlanc is in one of the other city meetings today. So we kind of switch up and go around to make sure that the district is covered. This month, we did not have a coffee hour. So I know many of you missed it. I'm sure you did. And we will resume in August, okay, with the coffee hour. And of course, it's the second Monday of the month, and it begins at 11 o'clock. And you're all more than welcome to attend. Also, while I'm here, if there's anyone who has any questions or concerns that you would like for me to take back to the Commissioner, I would be more than happy to do that. You can see me after, or you can see me now, whatever works for you. Okay?
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, item seven, petitions of communications. We have none. Item eight, we have another public hearing, a call of order for the capital improvement for fiscal year 2014 to 2018. Ms. Bettes, you want to take the roll for that?
We do not have to.
We don't take the roll for that? Okay.
Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
I move to approve the cities.
It's a public hearing.
Oh, the public hearing, I'm sorry.
Anybody wishing to speak on the capital improvement from fiscal year 2014 to 2018? Please come to the podium, state your name. I'll ask one more time. Anybody wishing to speak on the capital improvement? Okay, we will close that public hearing. We will move on to item nine, the consent agenda.
Mayor?
Ms. Lynch?
I move for the approval of the consent agenda, item 9A1 and 2.
Support.
Support from Mr. Jones. Any discussion from the table? From the general public? Ms. Bettes?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. We'll move on to our study session. Item one, which was the subject matter of our first public hearing tonight, rezoning of Cherry Hill. Councils wish on this?
C.
Item two, the second public hearing, rezoning of Ince Road.
C.
Council good to go to C?
Yep.
Special land use, 30408 Ford Road. This is at Ford and Henry Ruff for the new subway. Is council wishing on this one?
C.
Capital improvement, which we just had the public hearing?
C.
Water and sewer rate ordinance, calling for a public hearing for 6:48 p.m. on August 12.
C.
C? Special assessment for Bach and Lathers reconstruction project?
C.
C?
C.
Making sure everybody's on board.
C.
Fire department, Safer Grant Award, acceptance and supplemental appropriation.
C.
Can we, before we move that up, I noticed that the gentleman responsible for this walked in.
Yep.
Do we want him, give him a chance to come?
Absolutely. If he wants to. Lieutenant Marinovich, you want to come up and tell us about the next fine job?
Did you want to speak on this at all before?
Do you have any questions?
Anybody? It's a great job, and we're very appreciative of all these grants that you keep writing. We think we're going to keep you.[624.41][624.41](Laughter) We're going to vote on that later, but...
Do you have any questions?
I was going to say, you're never retiring. Just kidding.
Excellent job. Move with the C?
Yes.
Okay. Item eight, this is ordinance changes from the police department. Chief, you want to speak on? This is the call for public hearing, so if you want to...
Just briefly, this particular ordinance change deals with the snow emergency parking ordinance. Anybody, there are two things we're trying to accomplish here. One is to move it into an area of the ordinance book that's more associated with parking as opposed to where it was. Additionally, there's some confusion over whether a violation issued under this ordinance was a misdemeanor or a civil infraction. The court was treating it as misdemeanors. That certainly seems a tad severe for a parking violation, so we are making it very clear here that this is a civil infraction.
Okay. C?
C.
Okay, you want to talk about the next ones?
The next one deals with what's commonly known as a trespassing ordinance. Our trespassing ordinance required notice before someone could be charged with trespassing. While that's very helpful in most cases, and by notice, I mean we had to tell the person, "You can't be here anymore." Where that failed us was at 3:00 in the morning when a guy is out going through your shed in your backyard. He hasn't committed a crime yet. He's just out there shopping, and we interrupt him. It was really hard for us to charge. This now will allow, I'm sorry, I moved on to the wrong one, didn't I?
Yes.
This is... We'll cover this one, so while we get there...
All right, I'll finish that one up. This one now allows us to charge people for wandering into your garage, your shed, your outbuilding, your boat, your, I believe it covers your railroad car if you happen to have a train car in your yard. So it's just broadening it a little, giving the police department a little more authority to take action.
Okay. Going to go back to the fire?
The one I skipped has to do with the negligent, careless, reckless, and willful discharge of a firearm in the city. The ordinance was written in such a way, we had a specific example not too long ago, where a man took a shot at a squirrel. Apparently, he was angry with the squirrel. He missed the squirrel, but shot his neighbor's home. Because he wasn't aiming at his neighbor's home, the ordinance didn't quite cover what he had done. We were able to charge him under a hunting ordinance, or rather, under a hunting law, but we didn't have a local ordinance. So at the recommendation of the city attorney, we have beefed this up a little.
Okay.
Next one.
And the next one?
The...
Traffic?
The next one is to repeal the traffic code as it exists currently within our ordinance. We had adopted by reference back in, I think, 2002, the Michigan Uniform Traffic Code, and this just makes us more current, brings us up to date. But first, we have to repeal the existing one, and then that will be followed by the next item, which is to replace it with our traffic code amendment that takes a lot of things into consideration, allows us to use the Motor Carrier Safety Act for enforcement, which right now, we don't have that ability. It also allows us to prosecute locally under the super drunk ordinance. That's a fairly new law, and when it came into effect, we all thought it was grand until we charged the first person here in Garden City. We have to go through the county. It's a pile of extra paperwork. It calls for the suspect to remain in jail longer while we're doing our paperwork, and we felt it would be best to bring that under the city ordinance, so we can move more expeditiously on that. Those are the highlights from there.
C?
C.
All right. Item 13, underground fuel storage tank, you want to speak on that as well, Chief?
This particular item deals with, I believe, the engineering costs with Hennessy Engineers to oversee what we have discovered to be contaminated soil in the parking lot behind the fire department and police department. This is a problem that goes back to 1992, that no action was taken on. The hole was closed up, and here we are in 2013, holding the bag on this.
And for the public, it's leaking fuel tanks is why we've got contaminated soil, right?
That's correct. And this is just for the engineering costs, and of course, the engineer is very important in this, and you'll see from the next item, it's not a small project.
And then the next one is, B is to replace the contamin, to remove the contaminated soil and replace with clean soil, 115K?
That's correct.
Up to 115K?
Up to, and by the way, I forgot to mention on the engineering one, that's also up to 27,750. Hennessy provided us with an estimate on the high side, so there would be no surprises. The same thing applies here on the mitigation of the contaminated soil. 115,000 is the high side, and that money will be coming from fund balance.
Okay. Any questions from the table?
C.
C?
C.
Okay. We will move on to our C agenda. Item C1, rezoning of Cherry Hill on the 31492, 31506, and 31520. And I believe there was, is this the one that had the option?
No.
No.
No. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Thack?
I was hoping one of you would speak up first. I don't want to say all these numbers.[999.13][999.13](Laughter) I'd like to make a motion. To adopt an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Garden City. The ordinance involves a rezoning from R1, which is one family residential, to C1, which is local business for property located at 31492, 31506, and 31520 Cherry Hill Road, also known as parcels 35-023-04-0032-000, 35-023-04-0033-000, and 35-023-04-0034-000.
Can you repeat that?
No.[1050.23][1050.23](Laughter)
Support.
Support from Mr. Jones. Further discussion from the table, from the general public?
Mr. Mayor, while perhaps not my place, I do feel obligated to remind council, I am fairly certain that Mrs. Dodge does not entirely support this, and unfortunately, as you know, something came up that she couldn't attend today, but I just wanted to remind council that she had some issues, and her issues, I believe, deal with the entire appearance of Cherry Hill Road and how we're going to treat it.
Any further discussion from the general public? Ms. Bettes?
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes 6-0. Item two, rezoning of Ince Road.
Mayor?
Ms. Lynch?
I move to adopt an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Garden City. The ordinance involves a rezoning from C1, local business, to C2, community business for property identified as parcels 35015040414001 and 35015040418001, more commonly known as 843 through 879 Ince Road.
Support.
Support from Ms. Squires. Any discussion from the table, from the general public? Mr. Wallace?
I think I must have fell asleep on the last one I didn't hear you ask about. I'd like to know what's going in these places.
Dollar store and the first one and a bakery in this one.
Bakery on this one and a dollar store at Cherry Hill, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any further discussion from the public? Ms. Bettes?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes 6-0. Item C3, special land use for 30408 Ford Road. This is the subway that's going to be going in at Ford and Henry Ruff. This is for a special land use permit for a drive-through restaurant.
Your Honor, this is the one with the options.
Okay. If we're Ford, we should go with option one, I believe.
I'm for option one because the planning commission has already had their meeting. It's been recommended.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Fetter?
I'd like to make a motion to elect to not take, to take the application for the special land use at 30408 Ford, and under consideration, the recommended approval by the planning commission becoming final.
Support.
Support from Ms. Lynch. Discussion from the table, from the general public. Ms. Bettes?
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes 6-0. Item C4, capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2014 to 2018.
Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
Finally, I'm getting in the right spot this time. I move to approve the city's five-year capital program, CIP, for fiscal years 2014 to 2018 as presented.
Support.
Support from Ms. Lynch. Discussion from the table. For the public, this is just a plan of the capital improvements that we plan on doing in the next four or five years, and when we go to approve any of them, they still all have to come before council to get approved. When we go to buy vehicles or put a new roof on City Hall, they still have to come back before council. This is just approving the plan. Anybody from the public wish to comment on this? Ms. Bettes?
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes 6-0. Item C5, water and sewer rate ordinance to call for a public hearing for 6:48 p.m. on August 12.
Mayor?
Ms. Squires?
I move to introduce and call for a public hearing on the water sewer rate ordinance to be held on Monday, August 12, 2013.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
At 6:48 p.m.
Support.
Support from Ms. Lynch. Discussion from council, from the general public. Ms. Bettes?
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes 6-0. Item C6, special assessment for Bach and Lathers reconstruction project.
Mayor?
Ms. Lynch?
I move to approve the attached resolution directing the assessor to prepare a special assessment role for the properties in the Bach and Lathers 2013 reconstruction project.
Order. For Mr. Kerwin. Discussion from council, from the general public. Ms. Bettes?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes 6-0. Item C7, fire department Safer Grant Award, 7A to accept the Safer Grant. Ms. Squires?
I move to accept the award from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security Staffing for adequate fire and emergency response program, to hire four additional firefighters in the amount of $746,456, and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents related to this grant award.
Support.
Support from Ms. Lynch. Again, this is because Lieutenant Marinovich over here wrote a grant, and the federal government is going to give us $700,000 to do this. Stand up, Lieutenant. Okay, any further discussion from the table, from the general public?
Thank you very much for writing that grant. Citizens, I'm sure appreciate it. It's not just about money. Money's great. It's a lot of money. But think about the lives that it could save and the injuries that it could save. That is as much as important as the money is. I appreciate you working in Garden City, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Say your name, please.
My name is Tracy Pace, and I live on Bach Block Street, and I've actually been a resident for nine years now. Thank you for writing the grant. At first, I thought I would stand here and give you the facts regarding why you should approve the grant for the additional firefighters in our city, but when I saw the argument, I could see no reason why you'd vote against it. It was then that I began to think about the importance of our firefighters. You seem, they are unique, qualified, unlike any other, not only fighting fires, but the first responders in car accidents and in natural disasters like tornadoes, floods, and God forbid, a terrorist act. They assist our police department and serve at community functions. They are the very backbone of our safety in our community, and they are the faces of the strength for our community. Our fire department has been shortly staffed for well over a year now due to budget restraints. I understand, sorry, I understand they are not the only ones affected. Everyone has been affected, but through the hard work and dedication of our own, we have been given the financial means to pay for the additional firefighters that we so desperately need. Our population is, I believe, 750,000?
27,000. 27,000.
27,000. I do, sorry. That was a misprint. With only four firefighters, we have made it work, but it isn't enough. If at a business or a home fire, we cannot enter. We do have to call for assistance, which takes jeopardy on the lives within, the firefighters, and also any company or any firefighter that's coming from another district that has to use their lights in order to reach them and help them. The grant requires no matching funds from the city, and it comes with no obligation to retain the new firefighters should there be no further funding, but we do hope in the long run, the funding will be there in order to keep them aboard. First and foremost, to be a firefighter means to be a team player, and tonight, we need to be part of a team altogether and pass the grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Anybody else?
Just a quick comment. All of our departments are hardworking around here, and the fire department goes out, I'm listening to the weather, I'm watching two faces back there, because they're a little bit nervous, because in weather like this with the storms, the lines go down. Who's some of the first people out there? The firefighters. So we thank you, Scott, for writing this grant. You've been excellent on grants, and we hope you continue. And I think that's cheers from above as well. So thank you for your hard work. And I think that's cheers from above as well, so thank you for your hard work.
Okay. Ms. Fettis?
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes six zero. Item seven B, this is the supplemental appropriation, this is to adjust for this year's budget for this, so...
Mayor?
Ms. Squires?
I move to approve the supplemental appropriation in the amount of $306,341, increasing revenues and expenditures for the receipt of the federal fire safer grant as presented.
Support.
Support from Ms. Lynch. Discussion from the table. From the general public. Ms. Fettis?
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes six zero. Item C eight, this is our first ordinance change, call for a public hearing on August 12th at 6:50 PM. Ms. Lynch?
I move to introduce an ordinance to amend the City of Garden City code by amending and relocating a section, which amended and relocated section shall be the snow emergency parking ordinance, to be now designated as section 71.05 of chapter seven of said code and to call for public hearing on August 12th, 2013 at 6:50 PM.
Support.
Support from Mr. Jones. Discussion from the table. From the general public. Ms. Fettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Item C nine, the firearm ordinance?
Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
Move to introduce an ordinance to amend the City of Garden City code by amending chapter 137 of title 13, section 137.01, providing for the prohibition of negligent, careless, reckless, willful, or wanton discharge of firearms and providing for prohibition of injury or property and to call for a public hearing on August 12th to 2013 at 6:52 PM.
Support.
Support from Ms. Squires? Discussion from the table. From the general public. Ms. Fettis?
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes six zero. Item C 10, trespassing ordinance?
Mayor?
Mr. Kerwin?
Move to amend to chapter 132 of title 13, section 132.39, providing for the prohibition of unlawful entry of the property of another and designate a violation as a misdemeanor.
Call for a public hearing?
Call for a public hearing.
Call for a public hearing.
August 12th, 2013 at 6:56 PM.
Six fifty-four.
Four.
Six fifty-four, I'm sorry.
Oh, very good, thank you.
Support.
Support from Ms. Lynch. Discussion from the table. From the general public. Ms. Fettis?
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes six zero. Item C 11, the repeal of the traffic code. Call for a public hearing.
Mayor?
Ms. Lynch?
I move to introduce an ordinance to amend the City of Garden City code by repealing chapter 70 of title seven, section 70.04A through O and Q through X and to call for a public hearing on August 12th, 2013 at 6:56 PM.
Support.
Support from Ms. Squires? Discussion from the table. From the general public. Ms. Fettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes six zero. Item C 12, remember the traffic code to replace what we just repealed.
Mayor?
Ms. Squires?
I move to introduce an ordinance to amend chapter 70, title seven of the City of Garden City code, providing for adoption by reference of the Michigan Motor Vehicle Code, PA 300 of 1949 as amended, providing for adoption by reference of the Motor Carrier Safety Act, PA 181 of 1963 as amended, providing for adoption by reference of the Uniform Traffic Code, PA 306 of 1969 as amended, and calling for a public hearing on August 12th, 2013 at 6:58 PM.
Support.
Support from Ms. Lynch. Discussion from the table. From the general public. Ms. Fettis?
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes six zero. Move on to C 13, underground fuel storage tank.
Mayor?
Mr. Kerwin?
Move to approve the proposal for fantasy engineers dated July 9, 2013, provide the necessary engineering services for the underground fuel tank, additional containment soil removal in the amount up to $27,750 and authorize the city manager to sign all necessary documents.
Support.
Support from Ms. Lynch. Discussion from the table. From the general public. Mr. Wallace?
Those tanks were put in 1992, correct? Something like that, 1990?
No, long before that. These were tanks that pre-existed the construction of the new...
Did they have double liners or just a single liner?
I'm afraid I have no idea.
I would assume it's called steel tank.
If it's double liners, there's, some of those come with warranties. Okay, thanks.
The original, there was one tank originally installed on the South property line, 1979. It was just one tank, single wall. That was removed in 1992 and that was this tank that was leaking gasoline at the time and then we installed two new tanks that were double-walled fiberglass in 1992 and those were the ones that were removed this past October.
There's no leaking.
And there was no leaking.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Fettis?
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes six zero. We'll go to 13B, underground fuel storage tank containment soil removal and replacement.
Mayor?
Ms. Lynch?
I move to approve the supplemental appropriation for underground fuel storage tank additional soil removal in the amount of $115,000 and authorize the mayor and city treasurer to sign all necessary documents.
Support.
Support from Mr. Jones. Discussion from the table.
That is up to $115,000.
That's, that's how the city manager presented it, yes.
But that's not the way it was written.
It's not the way it was written, so it's up to?
Correct, it is up to.
Okay, and I'll modify it, up to.
Presently, we can't predict exactly how much soil will have to come out of the ground.
Right. Any other discussion from the table? From the general public. Ms. Fettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Fetter?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes six zero. We will move on to item 10 on our agenda, public comments that are not on the agenda. There's a five-minute time limit. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium and state your name. Anybody wishing to speak under public comments?
Hello, my name is Jason Cassab. I'm representing Handy Mart Fine Food, Inc. on Warren and Merriman. It's my family's business that we've owned for the last 15 years. Excuse me. We took, we took that business over 15 years ago, was closed for three years and we've built it to what it is now. It's actually a thriving business. And recently, no parking signs were put up on this, on the street, right on Rush Street, on both sides of the street and it's killing our business, especially our lunch business, which is what, what built the business, was our lunch. Our food is what we're known for over there. And I wanted to know what we can do to either, because I don't know why they put them up all of a sudden on both sides of the street, I wanted to know if there's anything we can do to either get them removed or get some sort of restriction where parking, they can park during the day, let's say up until five, because a lot of the, the workers in the areas can't, it's difficult for them to park their trucks in our parking lot, so they park on the side street when they have their lunch. Now, what they're doing is they're parking down the street in front of the houses because there's nowhere for them really to park and we're having a problem with our delivery drivers because they can't pull into our parking lot, it's difficult for them to. So, I just wanted to know what, what can we do?
Sir, leave your name and phone number and we'll have, you can get in touch with the city manager and he can discuss the options and why, why it was done and if there's any options for you. So, if you just leave your name and phone number with Allison and the city manager will get ahold of you. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Mr. Weiss?
At the, at the last council meeting, Mary stated near the end of the meeting, the people at home should remember that some comments made by residents are either not true or not accurate. Since I spoke, one of the few that actually spoke that night, I took exception to that remark. And since we, residents cannot respond, I feel that that act is appropriately described by one of several words. And I ask the people at home to choose the one they like best. Let me present what took place regarding FOIA discussion that night. I bring you copies of two papers. Council considers FOIA fee agree, increase. And then a past issue, bills target Swifter State Government Transparency and it's about FOIA. First, you're considering the FOIA request even though, as of right now, the people of this city are paying 10 times, 10 times what they're paying in most other cities. And when the discussion was taking place that night, information was asked by one of the council as to how many FOIA requests we get. There was no idea, stated they had no idea. Maybe they could give an estimate. Now, that's the same thing that's been said for about a year because I've been fighting for a FOIA decrease so that people can get those decreases without the information, without paying an arm and leg. Nevertheless, council disregarded that and acted without reducing the FOIA. The second article relates to consideration by the state legislators to review the state act. It addresses the improvements that are aimed at, including a maximum charge of 10 cents a page, 10 cents a page, a 20% fee reduction if the city doesn't meet the 5%, five-day deadline to give you an answer. And if they go past five days at 20, 40, 60, 80, 100, you get it free. You get it free. They're also thinking or planning on forming a commission to investigate complaints and possible violations to this act. The legislators have called charging the exorbitant costs a form of economic stonewalling. Also, people have the right, the right to public documents. Citizens must be guaranteed transparency and accountability in government. It is unacceptable to charge such huge charges that people just give up asking for information. I've been talking about this a year and pretty much I'm back to square one with this council, which I had great promise of making some changes. In closing, ask the people at, at home in here.
You have 30 seconds, Mr. Weiss.
Do you think this mayor and council are eager to allow you an easy path to getting records to what you are definitely entitled to? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Buckner?
Al Buckner. I'd like to thank the gentleman for getting the grant. I thank and giving the DDA a raise and giving them bonuses. That's the guy that needs to get a bonus. How about the officer that arrested the two over here with the shootout? That's the guy that should get a bonus or get a raise. Okay? City manager, DDA has a mess that's been out here for weeks. I presented the picture, I don't know if you got a copy of it or not. I know you have a great love for the DDA. I'd like to see you, you know, make a phone call to the ordinance officer. He has the time to go around to the other part of the town, have him to come over here in our own front yard and take care of that. Appreciate it. In the last few weeks, we've seen talk about transparency and accountability. I'm gonna pat myself on the back because we didn't hear about this since I got here to start talking about it. Now, everybody's got the buzzword. We have council of seven people up here that the citizens wants transparency and accountability. But I'm here to tell you that we only have two on here that gives it to us and that's Jim Kerwin and Dave Fetter. And they take slack for it, I guarantee you. They haven't said they have, but I'm sure they do. Dave Fetter is a man of integrity and respect in this community. He doesn't mind to cut the tree and let the chips fall. And he's even stated that he doesn't care if the people vote him in or vote him out. He's gonna state the facts and I guarantee you in time, the facts will come out to be true of what he's saying. Now, we have a city here, it's a small city and the politics here that's played is just unreal to me. This city should be thriving and it's beginning to take off as the economy is. Our housing is still not recovering, yet we're selling homes, still the average of 50 to 60,000 when Westland is selling homes at double digits and their values are going up. And you have to ask yourself, why is that? They're building the city hall, this state of the art. Why is that? They have a mayor there who's the leader. They have people of 80,000 plus and I'm sure others are gonna say, well, that's why they're able to do that. Well, when they were increasing, why are we decreasing? I like to see Garden City back where it needs to be and where it should be. I feel that we're going backwards and we should be going forward. Now, if I was born and raised here, I would do everything I could to make this city like it used to be with 42,000 instead of 27,000. I ride around the city on my bike, take my dog for walks and it's blight all over. The roads are a mess. Thank God Jack is gone. Maybe we'll get somebody here that'll have a plan that will get something done. Because I don't think there was a plan. Instead of taking care of each other, we need to take care of the citizens and take care of our city. We're busting our city up. Dispatcher's gone, there's talk of the firemen going to Dearborn Heights, Westland. Who knows? Police department may be next. Then if that's the case, we won't need a city council. And we've seen things happen, it's illegal, city charter's broken. Open Meeting Act broken, state law, no regards. Our part-time city manager, I have utter note respect for you. And back when the part-time city manager we had before, when I was on the bandwagon to fire him, I even mentioned to you, you would make a great city manager. And you gave me that clistone, Clint Eastwood smiled and go, yeah, I make my day. And we've made your day, well, five up here did. But sir, your integrity is not the same as it was with me or the lot of citizens. I know you haven't accepted the contract, I really don't think one's gonna happen.
You have 30 seconds, Mr. Buckner.
I'm sorry?
You have 30 seconds.
Thank you. I don't think it's gonna happen because you're making 10 and 12,000 right now and there's a lot of things that's gonna come into play if you do. You're sitting there illegal, you're also... You're also negotiating the contracts, which one of them's already run out. You're wearing three hats. I say, why don't you be the new DPW? Wear four hats.
Your time's up, Mr. Buckner.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Wallace.
Buddy Wallace. We've got some good workers here in Garden City, real good workers. Good people. Scott that just wrote that grant, that's probably saved a lot of lives, maybe my own, maybe one of your guys sitting at the council. We never know. Money's important. That's a lot of money. And the fire trucks is great. But the ability to save lives are even greater. That's the greatest, worth more than money. You can't value a life. And I appreciate that. I want to make a statement about the ordinance officer. That guy has a lot of work to do. And when things get tough, trouble, economy goes down, his job increases about three, at least 30 percent, at least 30 percent. He's important to our city because if we keep our houses up and everything and he's out there, our values, our greatest asset some of us have is our houses in Garden City. And it's important that we keep him and keep him busy. And let him know that he's doing a good job. I agree. I think maybe we should have the ordinance officer go out there and check those rat-infested dumpsters in Garden City Kmart parking lot. There's rats in here. Albert's on the alley, spent a lot of money. Nobody will shop over there. If you walk through there and you've seen those dumpsters, and they've been there for years. Yet we have ordinances for all the other businesses that they got to be enclosed. But those six don't have to be. I would appreciate every one of you could drive by and just turn your lights on at the night and just look at it. When you go there after 2 o'clock, you'll see some rats running around. That's terrible. That is terrible. Maybe if we can't get nothing done about it, maybe we're going to have to have a rat barbecue one night called Naked Transit and have Free Transit over there and have a rat barbecue and get rid of the rats over there. It's nasty. The prime area, DDA, the DDA is great. The flowers are beautiful and the lights. But there's other things that's just as important or more important than that. It's selling the city. You're not going to sell the city with six dumpsters over there. And I'm sure Mr. Murray's brought this up before. Four years ago, we were supposed to have things taken care of over there. People won't shop there. You're hurting the businesses over there. Who wants to go to a nasty filthy place? No wonder they call you Garbage City. I get referred to that all the time. Some of the people that we coached against, GCYAA, you go to Westland or Dearborn Heights, and a lot of the policemen here in Garden City used to coach and some in Westland and some. Now, instead of just calling me Garbage City, they look out and say, there's the outlaw from Garbage City. Boy, it's nothing to be proud about. I love this city. Just do it right. You can do it right just as cheap as you can do it wrong. And again, thanks to that fire guy, the grants for the fire truck and that, that's great. That is great. We've got great people, got the best police department around. We've got the best fire department around. And to get us money like that and to possibly save future lives, it's outstanding. We're on our way back, guys. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Muller.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I hope the people on Ince Road with the two-foot-high grass is list. I turned you in today if you want to know who done it. You've had plenty enough time to clean it up and you ain't done it. So I turned you in. I think it's empty house anyway. And there's a church down there, I don't know what to call it, it's not a church, I don't guess. Down there close to Ince Road, they have, I don't know what they call it.
I think it's a mosque.
Yeah, but it's not really a mosque. They have church down there. You people, you say you don't want to be discriminated against. Well, get out there and clean your piece of junk up. You got grass growing, you got refrigerators blocking the doorway. I turned that in too, in case you want to know who done it. I'm not afraid to tell you. And there's a lot of people in this city that's not cutting their grass. I walk around and I see grass. Maybe some of the neighbors that live next to it, I'll go over and remind them, cut the weeds, you know. I understand weeds grow fast when it rains. But you could at least cut them and they make you look a little bit decent. And like I said to the people down on Ince Road, shame on you. If you want to know, just come on over and see me. I'll tell you, I turned you in. I don't care. You want to live like that, like a pig in there? That place inside looks like a pigpen. Drywall off the wall, refrigerator blocking the door, trash all over. So when you come over here, you come to the greatest country in the world, and you come over here because you want the freedom. Now you got the freedom. But you got to respect the rest of us too and quit living in the pigpen over there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muller. Anybody else? Mr. Barco.
68th street, I call it, six cars on the street. I call it six cars. Is that ordinance for that? Six automobile on the street, six cars.
Six cars are parked on the street?
Yeah.
As long as they're legally parked, they can park on the street as long as they're not blocking fire hydrant or somebody's driveway.
I think 400 yards on the east side. I drove, got out this morning, six cars. That's it, in the driveway, six cars. Blocking the sidewalk.
Okay, Mr. Barco, we can have the police department check that out. Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Tripp?
I'm sorry.
Oh. Just waving hi. Anybody else? Okay, city managers report.
Thank you, your honor, just a few things this evening. I've received, as the police chief and the acting city manager, a number of emails regarding the fireworks. Community was displeased again this year. I just wanted to respond to most of those calls, our emails that I received. We did, the police department did on the 3rd, 4th, and 5th of July, respond to 40 calls of fireworks. They wrote four tickets. Just prior to the 4th, we had one house fire that was tentatively attributed to fireworks. Next year, it will be our plan to put a special detail out strictly involved in enforcing fireworks. We, of course, one of our problems is that we need to catch people in the act, basically, of lighting a firework. And that's not that easy when you drive down the street with a car with overheads on it and markings on the side. We're going to do a different tactic next year. We hear the community, they weren't pleased, so we're going to try and improve on that. I want to mention that, as council recalls, you approved a new software purchase, BSNA, for a substantial amount. That also called for the purchase of some new computers to handle that. You may also remember that Councilmember J. L. Lynch brought to this council quite some time ago a concept of using American Express in compiling points that would allow us to make some purchases. Well, the 12 computers that we need for this upgrade at city hall will cost us absolutely nothing as a result of using those points. That's pretty significant. And I want to personally send out my condolences to the Nagel family. Joanne Nagel has lived in this community since the 50s, raised her children here, helped raise me. She would, depending on what door of the house I went out of, she would watch out and call my mother if I was trying to sneak out. She unfortunately passed away Friday in a car collision. And the family, family's certainly in our thoughts at this time. That's all I have tonight, your honor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Fettis, you have anything?
Your honor, I did want to just report to council that the state of Michigan legislature passed a law at the end of June that had immediate effect, which in a nutshell eliminated the local board of canvassers for communities in Michigan. The local board of canvassers are the people who certify elections and local elections in our community. So if the, if it's a presidential election, that always goes to the county. But local elections, such as the ones we're having in November, are canvassed by our own citizens. And the legislature eliminated that and that now those, our elections, the schools' elections, everyone's election will be canvassed by the county. Whereas we paid our lovely participants who were on the board of canvassers the whopping sum of, I think, about $20. We will have to pay Wayne County for the pleasure. I'm just betting it's not going to be $20. But that has been eliminated. Just wanted to let you know, it did have immediate effect. However, we're not going to have an August election, so it won't affect us until November.
Is that it?
I have a question.
Thank you. Mr. Kerwin?
Does that mean their people will come here? No, I don't think so.
Yeah. They did obtain, generally, when they're normally, when they canvass countywide and statewide elections, they have to rent a room, but they have acquired a property that they already had access to to make sure that they lowered the cost. And they were very cooperative in working with the clerks of Wayne County to make sure that the cost was as little as it possibly can be, considering.
Thank you, Ms. Fettis. Mr. Kerwin, you got anything tonight?
Yes, mayor, I've got six or seven things. The first one, the city manager wasn't here at the last meeting when I was discussing the dumpsters that Mr. Wallace just talked about tonight. But roughly four or five, or five or six years ago, the DDA put out, put that out for bids. That would be, what, east of Kmart, behind Albert's, Hertz Shoes, the dumpster enclosures there. And a couple of weeks later, they canceled it. They said they were going to do it next year, which was four or five years ago. So I've had quite a few people complaining about the garbage and the trash out there. Also, there's something now going on at the, in front of Kmart, at the old auto building. They had, over the weekend, a couple of dumpsters there. And in the back, you can see on the, what'd be the north side, there's something going on in there. I wonder if we could find out what it is.
Mr. Kerwin? If I may answer that question in particular. I'm told that the Penske Building has been sold. Kmart was instructed to get their things out of the Penske Building.
You know who it was sold to?
I don't know who it was sold to.
All right, thank you. Also, Mr. Weisig spoke of the FOIA. I was just reading in the, I think it was the MML publication. In fact, I wouldn't mind going to that class, it's a four-hour class. It's in Detroit. I think it's in August. Or I'd like to see us send someone, anyway, to that class on the FOIA information. Also, Mr. Buckner spoke about transparency and openness in government. I'm 100% for that. In fact, if you recall, when I was, had some pretty hefty charges for the FOIA information, I read off a thing that President Obama had just talked about regarding FOIA, openness in government and all that information. But I'm 100% for that. Also, the fireworks, did we, did these people have licenses, the 10 people?
I don't, my department doesn't license the fire department, but I know they did have some.
Yeah, so yes. Thank you. Okay. Another thing, I've been asking for approximately a year and a half to have a charter commission so I could go back over the charter. And I don't think anything's been done, but someday within the next 20 years, I think we should do that. It's been quite a while. And there's so many different pieces of information that we talked about. I believe when Mr. Jones came on, a lot of that stuff really needs to be looked at. And that's just barely lightly hitting it. I mean, that's on the surface. There are so many things over the last many years that need to be changed. So I think we really need to do something with getting the charter commission back and doing something here. And other than that, that's all I have, thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Kerwin. Mr. Fetter?
Yeah. Chief, when we get the attorney billings, he needs to make sure that when he bills us for a service, he says what the service was and who asked for that service. In other words, if he talked to Dave Fetter and Dave Fetter asked him a question, he needs to note that, as he has done in the past, I've noticed a slight change with this billing. I'm inclined that if he doesn't, then I'd want to set that item aside until he identifies what it was. Also, there's been a lot of talk about second meters for people. There's been a lot of discussion on whether if Dave Fetter gets a second meter and I don't pay sewage on it, would my part of the sewage be billed to my neighbors? Would other people around me have to make up the difference? And there's an argument for both sides. I've spoken with the chief. And as you know, we have an audit that we should be getting soon. I'm not concerned about not having, yeah, it takes time. There's a lot of information we've asked for as a council to see on this. In the meantime, I wanted to float an idea to council. We can have second, in my mind, we can have second meters that will save people money and the other people in the community would not be responsible for the sewage charges for that second meter. The way we can do it is this. The homeowner can order a second meter and all we bill is the wholesale price of the sewer charges to that. What I mean by that is this. Detroit bills us for water and Wayne County gets a part of the sewage. We add fees to that. It isn't all Wayne County charges. I briefly thought it would save us 25%. The chief wanted to look into it. It might save us more. It may be 20%. But see, before we pass the bill on to you, we mark it up beginning. It isn't all the city of Detroit's problem or Wayne County's issue. Yeah, they bill us, but we're not billing you what they bill us. Part of this audit will show that. I think this audit would more clearly show how much we're billing you over and above what we're being charged. If we allow a resident at their own expense to put in a second meter and we only bill the wholesale cost, if Wayne County bills us, if you spend $100 during that period on water to water your lawn, and it's, I know it's more than 100, I'm just using it as an example, and your sewage is 150, the sewage wouldn't be 150. It would be less the amount, we would mark up the other one. So your original line would keep all the fees we mark up right now. I mean, we may discuss and cut those at a future date. That second line is going to just bill you for the cost that Wayne County bills us. If I'm right, it can be a difference of 25%. I had someone else say it could be close to 40. I don't know what that is. Rightfully, I shouldn't be throwing numbers out there, but I could almost guarantee you it's 25%. So by doing that, the amount of fresh water you use on your main line, therefore, the amount of money we charge you for sewage will go down appropriately to what the other meter goes up. So your sewage will reduce. Your fresh water on the main line will reduce. your fresh water on the main line will reduce, and thus, your bill will go down. And because we're not going to bill you for the added fees for maintenance, or for whatever we want to call it, you'll save that amount. That's the savings here. And that, I think, is what we have to look at to see and put it to you if it's worth it. First of all, we need to know from the administration if it's workable. I've been sitting on that idea for a while, mentioned it to Chief Meery. He said, "Interesting." Boy, that's interesting. Let's think about it. I want to run it up the flagpole tonight and see if it's worthwhile. To some of us, 25% may not be enough to justify the cost of a second meter and everything that goes with it. I've heard estimates of $1,000 or so to have it done. To others of us, that would be, they'd make that up into billings, based on what they're being billed now. Their percent is probably higher than other people's. My point is this. We should leave it up to you. We need to do our due diligence and only charge you for what we need to charge you for. And get out of the savings and loan business. It isn't up to us to save the kind of money we've been doing with the system. But again, the audit will lay everything in front of us. We all need to adjust that at that time. What I think we ought to start looking at now is the idea of the second meter charging sewage to it, so it's not being spread to anybody else, but just the sewage, no markup. And then get more concrete numbers for everybody. That's the only way I can think of trying to allow you, as the resident, to take charge of what you want to do with your water system. It's yours, not ours. So I think this is an option we need to seriously consider, council. I don't know if we can get, do we have to wait for the audit on what we add to our sewage?
No, sir, we do not.
Do you have any information, Chief?
I don't have any yet.
Okay.
No.
So I don't, I don't expect any yeses or nos. I hope I don't get any yeses or nos. I don't want any, I don't want any pats on the back, congratulations, or anybody sneering at me. It's an idea that I think needs to be looked at. It's an idea that it's your system, it's your water, you should have the option of subscribing to the service and the level of service you want to subscribe to. You do it with everything else in your life, except with us. We just tell you what you're going to do. I think this is an option. You should have an option A and B, and maybe a C and a D. So I would like to look into this, maybe pull some numbers together. I would, it wouldn't bother me if we had to wait for the audit. But at least the members up here can kick it around.
We can have it on the study session.
And, and think about the pros and cons to, to something like that. We would still leave our charges on the main sewer line, whatever they might be. We just wouldn't move them over to the second. I now have another question for Chief Meery. There are some condos on Dawson, off of Merriman, that look like they're new within the last 10 years or so. They come in, it's like a U. They come in off of Dawson to the first block, go over it, and then go back to Merriman again, whatever those streets are.
They're a single family home?
They're single, detached condos. My understanding is this. I talk, I happen to work with a resident there at the village. And when I floated this by him, he says, "It's great, but we all have two meters now." I guess when the condos were built, there was an issue with water pressure, so most of them have wells with pumps. And they have two meters. And they're paying for sewage on both. My question is, are we billing for all the add-ons on both as well? First of all, is that a, again, I'm not asking for a statement. Is that a true statement? Could we tell if those condos, when they were put in, that they all have two meters? And if they do, can we check it and make sure we're not billing the same maintenance fee to each meter?
Yes, we can, we can look into all that.
That would be my question, because he said, "Well, God, I'd love that. I already have the meter. It won't cost me a thing." And then he looked at me, he goes, "Oh, my God, you're charging me twice, aren't you?" And I said, "No, look, don't go there. I don't know. You know, here I'm starting a forest fire, and I'm just asking for an opinion." So...
We'll get that answer for you, Mr. Fetter.
Yeah, if we could look at that.
If I could. The proposition you're airing out tonight regarding the second meter, meter and the wholesale cost, I may have misunderstood you. Wholesale cost just on the sewage, or are you, did you say wholesale cost on the water also?
I don't know. I think, if we can do it both ways, personally, I'd like, I'd like to do it both ways. I'd like to, I'd like to have that second meter. I would assume a second meter is meant to water lawns, wash cars, fill pools, things outside of the dwelling. It's not meant to be used for...
Drinking.
Flush of the toilet and drinking and laundry. Okay? If that second meter, if we can give the residents the wholesale cost of their fresh water and their sewage, based on hearing it, hearing me say it, I'm all for it. But it may not be practical, for whatever reason, so I want to leave that door open, too.
Okay.
I don't want to close one, I don't want to be adamant on anything at this point. You know I will be at a certain point, but it won't be tonight. So I, I hope everybody understands me, and what I'm hoping to do and thinking of doing. But if we can do something like that and give our residents an option, and it doesn't cost us anything, it doesn't cost any other neighbors anything, the only cost is, they have to assume the full cost of putting in the meter. I would assume we would come up with a protocol and an inspection type of service where we have to go out and inspect to make sure it's done by a licensed contractor and by the proper rules. If the homeowner is willing to do that, then I say, "Bravo. Go for it." But I think it's an option that we should look at as a council. And, and of course, anybody that has any comments, let any of us know on what you feel, something like that, if anybody else has any other ideas. But the biggest drawback of a second meter was the thought of having to bill other people any charges for sewage that the person with the meter. This way, there won't be. They'll pay their sewage. They just won't pay anything else. And if we can get the fresh water at wholesale, too, let's do that.
I believe that's going to be problematic, but I, I just wanted to understand your proposal, so that when I can go back to the staff and discuss it. But I think the water part will be problematic.
I'm sitting on Santa's lap, asking for everything right now, and we'll see what he gives us.
Yes, sir. We'll get you the facts.
And the last thing, something came up, and it's, it's disheartening to me. My phone started to ring the other day, and it was employees. And I, I didn't believe it at first until I talked to one of the board members. Our DDA recently, while we were passing a budget, voted to give their director a $1,500 bonus. And it blew my mind that our department heads here in the city, Ms. Bettis, her department took the biggest hit on employees in the city because she's non-emergency, okay, if you will. We went after her deeper so we could keep more firemen and cops. When this council came on board, they were open three days a week and closed for lunch. They're open four days a week, and they don't close for lunch. They're, they're open from nine to five, Monday through Thursday. Her budget's been shrunk. All of her employees are cross-trained in every other job in this city, in this city hall, so they can fill in. We just saw a lieutenant tonight who got us an $800,000 grant. That man has gotten us $1.4 million in grants. He went to grant-writing school on his own time. And all we've done for him is clap. The idea, this woman is, I'm sure she does a good job. I'm sure she's competent. But our DDA is spending more money than they've ever spent on salaries. And in this past budget, they got an $800 increase to their budget for possible overtime for the assistant, and they just voted a $1,500 bonus to someone who doesn't even come to our city five days a week. She's, she's full-time. I call it part-time. She's not coming in here. Now, it's, it's okay. The board approved it. I'm not on the board. But you know what? We control the budget. And when every one of our department heads, everyone, has had to do more with less, and we've been scraping and begging, our employees, Scott went out and got $1.4 million in grants. Our cops are working 12, on their own, well, they, not on their own. They agreed to work 12-hour shifts without overtime. They're working 12-hour shifts. Do you know what this cop said when he called me and said, "Did we really just give $1,500 bucks to a part-time department head?" I said, "I didn't hear about it." I had to call him back and say, "Yeah, we did." Person on the board said, "Oh, don't worry about it. They wanted $4,000. We got them down." Yeah, you've got to be kidding me. It's a slap in the face. I don't mean to impugn her integrity. This isn't about her. She didn't have a vote. And she isn't going to turn it down, but neither would any of us. I wouldn't turn it down. But the idea, and the thing is, is every, most everybody on this board are business owners, right? They have businesses in the downtown area. None of them are going to give any of their part-time employees a bonus just because they did their job. She's supposed to do her job. If we're going to start handing out bonuses, if they have enough money to do it, we're going to keep it out of their budget, and we're going to start giving out bonuses. We're going to give every cop 200 bucks and say, "Thank you." We're going to give Scott a trip. We're going to start doing something. We're going to give our department heads enough money to where when I walk in City Hall, Allison isn't sitting there working the counter as she's supposed to be getting reports ready. Or when I walk into the police department, the chiefs in the record bureau filling in for a minute. It's, it's a slap in the face. I can't stop it, or I would, but I can talk about it. And you all need to know, there are still things in this town that, it isn't logical. It just isn't logical, not with what we're going through now. And now, we got to, we're going to be negotiating our contracts. You don't think that isn't going to come up, when we ask them to pay more of their health care? So that's a shame. Anyway, that's all I have, Mr. Meery.
Thank you. Ms. Squire?
Okay. First of all, I was at the DDA office this morning, and we were talking about the bricks. They are supposed to be gone by the end of this week.
Good.
Just to let you know, Mr. Buckner, and anybody else who was concerned. The ones that have been purchased are supposed to be picked up this week, and there are a couple pallets left that they're going to, request the DDA, or the DDA is going to request DPS to pick them up and take them over to their place to store them for them. Also, on Friday, July 26th, it's a moment so many people have been waiting for. There's, we're going to have the unveiling of Willie the Pig.
Two.
He will be back.
Willie the Pig Two.
Willie Two. He didn't put that on here. But anyways, there's going to be a barbecue. The event starts, it's on Friday, July 26th, from 5:00 PM to dusk. Barbecue dinner will be from 5:00 to 7:00. Adults will be $8, and children 10 and under $5. From 6:00 to 6:30, there'll be a martial arts demonstration. From 6:30 to 7:00, there'll be a pig calling contest. From, at 7:15 is the unveiling of Willie in the Commons Corner. All this is going to be, take place back behind Albert's on the alley. And at 7:30 to 8:00, there's going to be a treasure in the haystack contest, also over by Albert's. Then at 8:15, everybody can move over to the moose, and there's going to be a little bit of musical entertainment and an outdoor movie that's free of charge to anyone that wants to come. That should start probably about 9:15, right around dusk. And the featured film is Babe. So we hope that everybody can make it out there. If you need, you know, any more information, you don't need reservations for the dinner. If you want more information, you can call the DDA office at 734-261-2830. And there are also sponsorships available, for any of the businesses out there that would like to sponsor, from $50 up to $750. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, could I say one more thing?
Sure.
Since everybody's talking about the DDA. Just so you're aware, several months ago, probably four or five months ago, a friend of mine said, "What are they doing with all the brick over there?" And I said, "I, I don't know. I think they're for sale." So I called up and I talked to Kim. And I, I asked her, Stacy, and she said she was out of town. I asked her about the brick. She didn't know. She said she'd call me back within two days. Well, it's been four or five months ago, anyway, having received a call. And the bricks are also there. He would have bought them all. So I don't know what the hell's going on over there, but it's time somebody found out. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ledge?
I had a contact from Darlene Hennessy, the president of the Garden City Hockey Association. She went to the president's meeting with Michigan Amateur Hockey Association and USA Hockey. And Garden City Hockey Association, GCHA, was recognized for first place in District Two for increased numbers in player, and they rated second overall in the state of Michigan. I think that's quite an honor for the hockey association. They increased by 33 people in their Learn to Skate program this past season, over the season previous. So that's really good. Couple things that are up and coming that they'd like you to know about. July 20th, from 10:00 AM till noon, and July 23rd, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM, they're having walk-in registrations at the ice arena with a reduced rate of $110 for house players. Learn to Skate is $40 for eight-week session. And registration is also available at the ice arena, Monday through Friday, from 12:00 noon until 6:00 PM. In September, on the 15th, they have their first annual golf tournament, starting at 12 o'clock noon. The cost is $70, or $75 per person, which includes 18 holes of golf, cart, hot dog drink chips at the turn, and dinner afterwards. They're looking for hole sponsors, $100 per hole. Please see their website for more details and contact information, www. league lineup dot com slash GCHA. And then also, in September, they haven't set their date yet. They're having another try hockey for free. So they will confirm that date and publish it. And they're looking forward to having all the youngsters out, boys and girls, for hockey. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, just a couple points. When a citizen turns in infractions of city ordinances, it makes me grateful that we passed... When a citizen turns in infractions of city ordinances, it makes me grateful that we passed a resolution against unlawful firearms being used, because I'd hate to see any retributions being made. And I would like to support Mr. Kirwin's call for charter revisions, certainly, the area of succession to fill vacancies needs to be addressed, but there's got to be lots of other issues that would come up if a commission did any study at all, and that's all I have.
Thank you. I just got one thing, I'd like to recognize and thank Nancy Bailey over at the Garden City Library for volunteering and planting all the flowers outside the library, some of your colleagues called and wanted you to be recognized for doing a great job in all the volunteering that you do. So Nancy Bailey, thank you for making Garden City look great. That's all I have, no further business, this meeting is adjourned.